Let the record reflect, everybody's here to join us. This is a regular meeting, this is on report adjustment. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the open public meeting then. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Actuary Park Press and the Star Ledger on January twentieth, twenty twenty period. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notices has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, Board Secretary is required to include the statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please Sandy.
Mr. Nick Busney.
Here.
Ms. Bianca, here. Mr. Ridgeway. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Porte.
Here.
Dr. Loffer.
Here.
Mr. Kuzella.
Here.
Mr. Higetti.
Here.
And Mr. Meter.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a super thin meeting tonight. We have to be here because we have resolutions that are now two months old, and so we need to move those forward. Recognizing that we don't have any new business, I had decided to put on a discussion about the new land use ordinances that were adopted by council a few weeks ago. I reached out to the planning board and invited them to to attend, and we have a few bodies. And I see that we have the mayor here, so. I didn't have a particular structure, but I thought what I would do is actually turn the pages and talk through what's been implemented for a couple of reasons. I think the first reason is because the changes are material. And the second reason is because they think that there's going to be a lot of questions that are going to be asked as to how these things are supposed to play out. And I think that it will be helpful for the people that are involved in this process to have an understanding of it in case you're asked a question. And moving forward as we look at things, these will be the new rules that will apply. So I think having an understanding of it and a heads up, I think will be helpful the next time we're trying to evaluate an application. To that end, do we have any matters that are going to be locked in under the old ordinance? So what would that be? That would be an application.
Anything that was deemed complete prior to the passes of the ordinance.
Is there one on River Grove complete before?
Well, that's statutory, that's forty-four fifty-five D dash ten point zero, the basically time of decision rule. If you have deemed something complete and then you change your ordinances after, they sit.
They don't go. No, that's just the question extended. Do we know if that nine seventeen or nine seventeen over there? Okay.
If it's not complete, then falls under the new ordinances. Where's Mr. Rupert on that?
I do not know why he's not here yet. It said it was him.
Oh, okay. Hope everything's okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I actually, I think it would be super helpful if he were a part of of the discussion. But I don't know, given that you guys are here, I don't know that it makes sense to start with our administrative items. Josh, do you have anything in particular that you wanted to present to the board to talk through?
I'm just trying to drew bets these giant shoes that are here, right? And so I figured I'd just fill the shoes. That's the only reason I'm here.
Okay. Two members of the planning board here, do you guys want to come up and sit with Josh at the table to engage us in discussion? You like where you're at?
Here.
You're here.
You want to run through the bullshit stuff in case you.
He's about fifteen minutes.
Okay. No, no, because I assume that that the administrative are not of any interest to everyone else. So do we all have a copy of the ordinances themselves? And for you guys, did you bring your own copy, Sandy? Do you have some extras?
Yes. Thanks.
So everybody remembers sort of the summary of the history, and it's actually been written into the ordinance itself is to kind of walk through how we got to where we are. And so I'll just say that the effort took a number of years. The discussion and the dialogue has been ongoing for even years long before that. But the the subject matter was raised at public meetings, was presented to the zoning board previously, was presented to the planning board. And I think what we wound up with was really the result of a collaborative effort working with the borough professionals as well to find, I think, compromise solutions to the problems that were identified by the land use subcommittees and and the people that were engaging. So I don't know if anybody spent a lot of time with these sorts of ordinances before, but what happens is what we've got here is it leads with the definitions, and the way you do it is that you do a red line exercise effectively of taking the old stuff that's there, you adopt it just as is, and that's the stuff that's in here that's not stricken. So adult bookstore is defined as who it was before, has not changed. We still have a bulk adult bookstore defined as we always have here at very. When you move through and you see the red line, that's when we start to get into the stuff that that is what we're changing. So the first change that we come to is is attic. And so we had attic definitions before. But as a policy perspective, what's happened is that, given what's happening with basements, a determination was made that we could liberalize finishing attic spaces. And so the general sentiment here is that if traditionally a habitable attic was an attic where one third of the attic space was seven feet or greater, which means that two thirds of it is seven feet or less, you can have a fixed staircase and that square footage would count towards habitable floor area traditionally. What's happened is that the new ordinance tightens up the definition of attic but is going to give people the ability to finish a quote-unquote habitable attic the way we had to find it before without counting that measurement against the cap. So it's a free space, the same way that a cellar is a free space. So you finish a cellar, not a basement, but a cellar, it doesn't count against the cap. Now you finish a habitable ladder for an attic and it doesn't count against the cap. Just like the way a cellar needs to be beneath the ground in order to to not count. The attic needs to be built as a, I have to stop calling it habitable, but that that is what we all know it as. So it needs to be constructed in that way in order for it to be excluded. The definition itself was tweaked a little bit to try to figure out where the problems and interpretation came from. But effectively, that is the intent of the revision. I hadn't expected to just sort of do a straight monologue. So are there any questions about kind of how that works or implementation?
I do have a question about, does a big staircase change there? Or must it, or must it not have a big staircase? Does that have any bearing on?
Yeah. So if an attic does not have a staircase to it, it's just an attic. If an attic is to be finished and is not to be counted against the square footage and it has a big staircase, as long as it satisfies this definition with only one third of it being seven feet or above, then it's excluded. So big staircase.
There's a seven feet in your.
That's correct. Now, if you do a big staircase and there is more than one third that has seven feet of clearance, then it's a story.
Exactly. Have we addressed? Welcome, Mr. Vizel.
Oh, my gosh.
Have we, that's fine. Have we addressed the point that Mr. Vizel brings up in the last two meetings about the two wall spaces? Is that changed? Is that still a picky point as or has our definition, our revision cleaned that up?
So there was discussion about that with the construction and zoning departments, and there was a tweet.
It looks like there's a sentence added to the definition of story from half that maybe would kind of clear that up because it's saying that pretty clear cut that addicts are either a half story or a story in time and how it's constructed. So you're going back then to the definition with attic.
And also now I hear you're under.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna carry that back to Mr. Neshes, because he had raised the story issue. So it's a half story and does not count against the square footage if it's one third or less. If it's more than one third and has a big staircase, it's a full story. So we're only allowed to have two and a half stories. So once an attic becomes a full story, assuming it is a two-story home plus an attic, now you need a variant because that third story is not permitted. And so I don't know, I think that that was part of the explanation of where that ridgeline thing wasn't going to create a problem, but that that concern came up late. And so Jordan is going to have to work through that with zoning. It is clearly the intent that we do not create a story by the mere fact of having those gables not tucked in. I thought that what we did was clarify something somewhere as to the gables themselves.
Reading this definition, it it kind of basis, if it's this, then it is an attic despite the two-wall, you know, thing, that was the old definition of what kind of is an attic.
How you'd identify the issue, just in case people don't remember, it was the amount of eaves in the roof line was when
I guess the roof is at least three feet higher than before, which in that case would be when you have multiple eaves, so.
But they had to be facing each other as well, right?
Correct. It was two, two opposite sides.
That's right, two out, one should be above the floor plate.
But you have a third side no longer playable. I think the definition, as you have it now, totally clarifies that.
There you go.
Well, there you go.
There you go.
We kind of.
To these.
Which is that.
It's very clear. Yeah, it's very clear.
Right. Yeah, and 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 that's great, and that's kind of what we discussed, and that was the conclusion, but I didn't remember exactly what I'm about there, so.
I have a quick question, please.
Yeah.
For clarity sake, and I'm Andrew Anderson. Glad to meet everyone. The it says one third of the floor beneath it, so presumably the second floor of the house, right?
Yes.
So how do you take into consideration that certain houses that may have a gable or a hill and a portion of it flat loose one the other, so by nature that whole attic is less than a third potentially of the floor beneath it, so it's not a third of the attic space. That entire attic may be habitable. That needs the definition then.
Yeah, so so to answer the question from my perspective, it starts with there are intricacies of particular buildings that can't be covered under a universal definition. So the intent here is to create sort of a standard that applies universally. It's going to have exceptions where it may not work and it may need adjustment. So that's what the zoning board is for. Someone would come in and argue, hey, this is within the spirit. This is what I want to do. I need a deviation. But it is one third of the attic space measured against the floor below. And so if there were flat areas or other things, it's not just where the roof pops up, it's the entire footprint of that second story. The idea is that the one-third requires, in order to achieve it, that you maintain a pretty reasonable, attractive standard roof pitch because you don't want it to flatten out and become a third story. We saw that with a garage for any old timers over on, I think, church, right? Where the garage, the the fifteen-foot garage effectively had the roof almost flattened out to where that area right above the seven foot became a second story. Unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Was there a reason that we preserved the bonus room? Space above the garage.
Because you're gonna count it.
It isn't gonna count.
No, it does count now before with stories.
Well, why don't, well, either we get to that, either take us to the definition you want to talk about, or wait until we get it, but at least understand what you mean.
So we've had in the past a number of instances where someone builds what they call a bonus room in the real estate of this thing. The space in the second floor above the garage.
Yeah.
That's supposedly not connected.
Yeah.
And we've argued about whether that counts or not, depending on how it's accessed.
Yep.
But it seems like the ability to build that bonus room without knocking through the wall from the second floor still exists, unless I read it.
No, we've got it. We've got it. It's in, it's in, I believe it's in the floor area definition.
Yeah, we'll discuss with you, but essentially if it's there, it counts, whether it's you can get to it or not.
You exclude the first floor projects, so I think that includes anything above that.
Yeah, I bet. I I it's gonna be hard to get through it all unless we do it in sequence, so I think we should wait until we get back to it. Anything more on attic?
No.
Okay. Basement. So what happened with basement and cellar is that everybody knows that a basement is greater than fifty percent above grade and a cellar is more than fifty percent beneath grade. The idea is that if it's underground, it becomes a cellar and a cellar can be finished and it isn't a living level. It isn't a story. A basement being projecting out more than fifty percent would count, that square footage would count against the cap.
So that, so these, the new homes that are being constructed, whereas twenty-two hundred square feet plus the eight or nine hundred square foot basement, those are then classified as sellers.
No, no, the the determination as to whether it's a basement or a cellar is tethered directly to where the 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 height is relative to grade.
Well, presumably there, if they're going forward, then it must be.
Yeah, assuming.
There's nothing corresponding, but they're super deep.
When a twenty-two hundred square foot house is advertised with a finished basement that never got a variance, you can assume that that's considered a cellar, that's considered a cellar, and it's more than fifty percent underneath.
Okay, we can probably tie this in with first floor elevation because that's changed.
So so that's why basement and cellar changed, because the measuring stick had been fifty percent, but we have now established a new standard called first floor elevation, and that is the finished elevation of the first floor. And that relative to grade has been set at thirty inches.
Existing grade, not new grade.
So basement and cellar now are determined based on whether or not you need or violate that thirty-inch requirement. So if you only have thirty inches or less, less exposed above the grade, then you're a cellar. And if you have more than thirty inches, it becomes a basement. Okay, it had to follow FFE when FFE was created. But the standard otherwise is the same. If it's, if it's underground, a cellar, it can be finished, it doesn't count.
And how do we come up with a thirty-inch line?
So the thirty inches was discussed relative to what is a feasible number for development in terms of the construction requirements related to grade, maintaining a positive pitch away from the foundation, the need for structural members above the the ground, and a desire to keep the development of homes insistent with the development pattern in existing neighborhoods. If you go and look, if you walk around and look at homes that were built thirty, forty years ago, what you'll generally see is small basement windows that tend to be in wells. And then you'll see six inches to twelve inches of parch coating on the foundation, and then you'll see some sort of a member which covers the floor choices for the first floor. That type of construction is going to meet this thirty-inch first floor elevation development. What you won't be able to do is to create open windows and openings by bringing the first floor elevation up where some some homes today, you'll see two, three, even four feet exposed above grade. They were still sellers because there's more than fifty percent underneath, and they would still meet the standard in terms of the height because they would calculate the height from the original grade to the final height of the structure without any relationship to where the first floor actually lands inside of that thirty, thirty-two, or thirty-five foot limitation. Answer your question?
Yep.
Um, any more questions on basement?
That's a good question on the floor areas.
Yeah, well, no, let's wait till we get it. I just want to do it in sequence or we'll be, we'll be all over the place. Building height incorporates now a new definition for average existing grade. The the average existing grade standard. Why didn't we talk about that? Oh, it's because we're in the grade comma average, yeah. All right, so we'll talk about how average existing grade is defined when we get to that. But basically, we've made consistent the the calculation of building height by resetting these standards and then applying them universally across all the areas that they're measured. So building height itself isn't changing. The idea is that it'll still be thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, depending on what zone you're in. We're just clarifying inside of this definition how we measure it. How we measure it. Cellar, we've spoken about cellar. It's the other side of the page. Crawl space is a new definition. The zoning department confronted this a handful of times. We didn't have a definition of crawl space, and so there was an interest in just clarifying. We've created effectively a definition that says a six-foot area and it needs to not exceed that thirty inches first floor elevation in order to qualify. But it's otherwise, you know, crawl space is what you would expect it to be. It just wasn't defined before. Where? Great, Jordan has a question about that one. So finished floor elevation is a new standard. The the problem that this was attempting to resolve was what I kind of went through, which is that we were measuring height from existing elevation to where the final structure wound up. So you'd have thirty feet, but there was no regulation of where the first floor had to fall inside of that thirty feet of available space. And so what was becoming more and more common because of a variety of factors, but a lot of them was a desire to have bigger, better basements, is that the first floor elevation was creeping up. And what happens there is you'll get the view of the foundation, but you'll also get a lot of mounding, which creates a lot of these situations that has caused problems for neighbors where water is running from new projects into existing houses, and we wind up with with a water problem where we never had one before. So the standard was set at thirty inches as an attempt to find a number that would permit people to build at an elevation that was safe and consistent with the construction requirements but would not provide enough flexibility for people to develop things that were out of character. And so we're trying to constrain that. That's where the thirty inches came from. You had a question?
Yeah, can you just clarify about the last sentence? The last part of the last sentence, it says, existing finished floor elevation. Says that it shall not exceed thirty inches above the average existing grade. What is that referring to? Why should it, why should it not exceed that if if that's the difference between basement and cellar?
Well, it 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 can be, it can't be in excess of thirty inches first floor elevation without a variance. So the standard is being set as thirty inches as a matter of right. And so I think that that's all it's saying is that for new construction renovations, FFE's got to be thirty inches, and the existing, the average existing grade is that calculation which is intended to nail down what the grade is the last time it was approved. So it's either as the house sits today, because there's never been a zoning or planning board decision or subdivision which set a different grade, or it is a grade that's been approved by a board presumably, which may may deviate from the standard but has been done with an understanding that in total, you know, it was, it was reasonable to do so. So I I think that's the reason that that last sentence is establishing that thirty inches.
But the difference between basement and cellar is if it exceeds thirty inches or it doesn't, so if it does exceed it, it is it's a basement, but you have a variance for exceeding it.
Yes.
Well, it was a basement.
So so that's, so that's interesting.
Yeah, but you need two variances then, one for the last basement and then one for the.
Also interesting is that these are located within a zoning or site plan. Trying to determine whether or not these are variances or design varies.
Because it's in the definitions section.
Yeah. Well, let's deal with these one or two.
Yeah.
What you just presented, I don't remember anyone questioning. But what what you've really pointed out is that if you read this the way it's written, you can't develop a basement because you would have an elevation that exceeds FFE. So you're going to trigger a variance in order to have a basement.
You're gonna trigger something, I'm not sure what, what you're triggering, but.
Well, you know, it's interesting. It's consistent with what we talked about, which was preventing the development of elevated first floors and having these structures. The regulation the import of the regulation as a basement and cellar is that the calculation of that square footage is part of a cap dissuades everyone from doing it. In fact, I can't remember, I've been on the board since two thousand and six, I can't remember ever once having a house that we've looked at where there was a basement where it was calculated as part of the square footage. A typical situation would be a split level. I suppose there are some of them in town, but I certainly haven't seen a new one developed since two thousand and six. So I I think you're right. I think that that's, it's an interesting observation which we didn't speak of, but effectively, that's right. You need a variance to develop a basement. Not because anybody cares, I don't, we didn't care if you, if you were going to include it in the square footage, it would address the issue of massing. But the problem is that allowing that first floor elevation to deviate under that standard would then trigger all the other things that we were trying to resolve by bringing these things up out of the ground. So that's a very interesting observation, and it's accurate. Interesting. You are raising a different issue now, and you're asking about whether or not we've got waivers or variance. I ask questions I don't have any answers to.
The the classically, classically, the provisions that rest within your zoning ordinances as opposed to your design standards. Design standards, your zoning ordinance is classically need a variance. Everything outside of that is our design standards where you seek a waiver. Everybody understands that there's, there's the bulk stuff, right? And then there's and then there's the other stuff that relates to like sound attenuation and things like that related to site. Yeah, more site, more site plan issues. If there's, if there's exclusively within your site plan. You guys don't usually see the site plans unless there's a variance involved, but if there is, they have to address this. If you're dealing with your site plan ordinances where they, you know, it's taken a standard commercial, so nobody gets upset about residents, standard commercial. We're gonna have, in your parking lot, I want so many so much of a percentage of greenery within the parking lot, so we're gonna have these things and that. And someone comes in and says, okay, this is not a this is not a bulk variance, it's not a zoning zone, this is design standards how we're going to do this. And the reason I'm not going to do that is for this, for this reason, and usually we're either, your engineer makes your recommendation, in this instance, it's appropriate, you know, maybe you can't get the buffer or something like that. And that would then be a design waiver, which for all intents and purposes, there isn't a lot of case law on it. But it's, you know, most folks look, look at it as a less, certainly a lesser standard than a D, certainly a lesser standard to my view of as a C.
Right.
And it's, it's kind of like, does this still work with this design? We want these things done, but for some reason.
This ties the definition to a plot plan. But the definition makes it a question of the number of stories and the number of stories.
I I don't want to go this far into weeds. I don't want to do this, but I want to thank Doug for pointing us to the weeds, but I want to turn the car the other way.
Okay.
Um, what, what I'll say though is that Table C is where our bulk standards are identified, okay? And so to the extent that Table C needs to be modified to include any of these standards in order to avoid that problem, then let's do that, and that's a project we can put you on. But the definitions were there before. The changes to the definitions keep us consistent with where we were. But to the extent that we've missed anything and need to implement Table C, then we'll do that. And I I would add this. I think that the idea of doing this is a challenge because, you know, hey, you know, Al doesn't see it this way, and Jordan sees it that way, and Andrew's asking a question, and we had the thought this is all a living document, and we may find that there's things that aren't right and that we need to fix. We've found a lot of things with the existing ordinances that were wrong that we needed to fix. And so if we're doing better than that, then we're still ahead of the game. But I I think that the goal is to identify things that need to be tweaked, and then there's an ongoing dialogue, and then we just continue to fix them. It's gives you to ask some simple things, but. Yeah, right.
I do have a, I do have a question though. The last sentence, that kind of delineates, that says, oh, it shall not exceed thirty inches. It doesn't belong in the definition. We're just defining what first floor elevation is. The first floor elevation is the thing that, which is thirty, you know what I mean? This is the measurement, and it can be somewhere else. Saying that it should be thirty inches.
I think that's the whole point, is that you can't really set a standard in the definition.
Right, the definition of first floor elevation is the measure of the height all the way up to this last sentence, and then that last sentence gets pulled out.
So Doug, I'd like you to keep a running a list of 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 questions. I think that you raised the first question, which is whether or not we have properly addressed these. It is, it is the intent that we are creating like-kind variances with regard to exceedance of the new standards. If in fact we have missed something with regard to Table C or whatnot, then we would want to button that up. It's not the intent to create design standards where we had a bulk standard previously. The next question with regard to whether or not this thirty-inch reference at the end of FFE. Should be somewhere else or should be eliminated. I would ask that you think that through. And, and let us know whether or not that is, that is appropriately there or not.
It belongs somewhere, whether it's.
Okay. Uh, now we're onto the hard one, floor area. So. This intends to resolve the problem that we've had for as long as I can remember. With difficulty interpreting how we measure habitable floor area. Um, habitable floor area was created as a standard in Fairhaven as I am. As part of an effort to prevent the development of what at the time were being called McMansions. They were houses that were oversized. There was a movement. It was in the nineties. Um, to try to both build them in places and to stop them from being built in other places. And so in Fairhaven, people that were doing this before us. Um, looked to the MLUL, which establishes what standards we can set for variances. Cs and D variances. And they wanted to establish a stricter standard than just having a cap. And what they wanted to do was to get to a D variance. They wanted to make it harder to exceed the square footage. So as to prevent McMansions from being developed in Fairhaven. Sorry, sorry, that didn't work out. Um. But at the end of the day, um, that was challenged and um, Fairhaven in the Runcson escape case went all the way to Supreme Court. To defend the ordinance, which basically established that a standard written into the MLUL originally for commercial properties. Uh, could be used in residential. And that was the habitable floor area ratio standard. So that's where it came from. Um, and that's why we have it. The problem is that in order to enforce it, we need to have a consistent measurement of structures. And what was happening over time and it just continued to erode over time. Was that we had a lot of confusion, most of it intentionally created by architects. As to what counted as habitable floor area. And so as a result, you know. Members of this board know that we would have different interpretations than the zoning officer. We would have people come in and have houses that they say measured at X and it was clear to us that it measured at Y. All of that being said, um, we decided that we would remove the word habitable from the definition. And we would streamline how we calculate floor area. So that we could create a uniform definition that was consistently applied. In doing so, we did not change the cap or the ratio percentages. So in R ten, it's still thirty two twenty and the floor area ratio in R ten is still twenty eight percent. That means on a hundred by a hundred lot, you can't build thirty two twenty, you can only build twenty eight hundred. Everybody with me? Cause those two standards apply, right? What we're doing now is we're redefining how we calculate whether that square footage is twenty eight hundred or thirty two twenty. With this definition, we're no longer calling it habitable, it's just floor area. And without reading all of the words, the concept is that everything counts. From the thirty inch mark. So if you picture a second story of a cave. What you would do is you'd go to the sillplates, you'd go to the outside wall where it meets the roof line. You'd move into where that's thirty inches in measurement to beneath the ceiling joists. And that would count. Everything within that footprint would count. Immediately below that, it would all be above thirty inches, so it would all count. And basically that's it. Um, it's. No magic to it. We just removed the idea of habitable straightforward measuring. One of the things Al that, that we did, addressed the concern about these. Uh, attic spaces that were being developed over garages. So that issue is that when people were developing second stories. They were developing a, an area above garages. Which is theoretical case where the area above the garage would not be accessed from the second story. So it would be built, it would be finished as an attic and it wouldn't count on your R at that time habitable floor area. As a result, people were building five hundred square foot areas, boxes in the, in the style that were not regulated in any way. And if you, if you follow that along, you could build all sorts of structures and attic spaces that weren't finished. Which were completely unregulated. And by and large, when you drive around town and you wonder how a house got built that didn't get a variance and you all would know. The answer is this. The answer is because some of that space was not calculated as habitable floor area. It showed on the plans as meeting the standard, but in reality, it was a structure that was far bigger than was ever intended. Because of this loophole. So what you'll see. Is the definition explains exactly how we're gonna measure the, the floor area and it talks about what we're excluding. And so it confirms that we're excluding the area that's under thirty inches. Attics that qualify as a half story, so we talked about that attic with seven foot. Cellars, which is not a basement, so it's gonna be thirty inches or less. First floor elevation, it's tucked under the ground. The first floor of garages, so that's the cement slab, that's where you park your car. And now we've got, this is your, your piece Al. The gross horizontal floor area, portions thereof.
Stop right there for one second and I'm gonna question, what portions thereof? What does that mean, four portions thereof?
A portion of a horizontal area.
That's thirty inches, that's instead of thirty inches.
Okay, that portion. Why not just the gross horizontal area?
Because then you're counting everything that's under thirty inches. Which just goes against. This portion, which goes against that. So you have to.
But you're already above the garage.
Well, wait, 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 let, let, let's read the whole thing. And if, if in fact, four portions thereof. Messes it up, then let's talk about it. But let's hear it first. So the gross horizontal area, portion thereof, of an unfinished storage area that is constructed immediately above the first floor of a garage. That is not accessible to a second story where the maximum height measured from the average existing grade, that's that. Common standard for what grade is today to a ridge height of the garage. Uh, to the ridge height of the garage is less than twenty feet. So the idea is.
The idea is I gotta read that again. We're excluding them? Yeah, that's what we read.
No, 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 no. So. From the, from the average existing grade, the twenty feet and under is all legal. I've got a cement floor. I've even got a ten feet. I've got a, an area above it, okay? And it's under twenty feet from average existing grade. So I've got thirty inches of first floor elevation. So the house is thirty inches up. So the, the garage floor is gonna be at existing grade. The idea is that we've created a space. But it is not a thirty, thirty two, thirty five ridge height. There is, there is room in here. To build midboard, you know, there is, yes, that's possible. But what you've done is you've excluded what ninety nine percent of what people are doing. Which is the idea that you carry that second floor across. You can't do that anymore. Because if you do the two and a half feet at thirty inches and you take out what you need for a garage, which is eight. You're left with, you need, you need structural. So you know, you've got eighteen inches or twelve inches of a roof joist. So you know, you've got all that stuff and you've got a floor joist that needs to go in there. So when you do that math. This is super, super tight to allow people to build something that's truly an attic above the garage. But can't be finished as we're gonna spare.
Oh, question. Why? I, I don't recall this.
Before you ask the question, is that, you understand that? I'm talking to Al, I know you do.
I'm still.
I'm not asking if you like it. I'm asking if you understand.
No, I understand it.
Okay.
Um. Still not clear the portions. Alright, but that's a separate question, I guess. Not sure why.
I, I, I don't, I gotta tell you. I probably have. Over a hundred hours in all of them. And there were at times probably twenty people involved. Including engineers, zoning people, lawyers, mayors. And so the truth is that, you know, it's not all written exactly as I would have written it. But the truth is, I would have screwed a whole bunch of stuff up, but for everybody else's help. In the spirit of figuring out how we do it together, um, this is exactly where it came to. If four portions thereof. Creates an exception which lets people do something that we don't want them to do, then it matters.
I'm not, it might go the other way because you're. You're allowing. The gross horizontal area. Or a part. Of the gross horizontal area. So are you not allowing? Some of that gross horizontal area to be excluded from. The floor area? Are you only excluding a portion of the horizontal area above the garage or are you excluding all of the area?
Let's assume we're excluding a portion. I can't imagine in my, I can't imagine in my mind how that portion creates. Area that could be finished because it, it's, it's horizontal, right? And so the idea here is that we're creating flexibility for people to develop a garage. With a twenty foot ridge height where fifteen is what's permitted as a um. As a detached garage, right? We've given them five more feet of flexibility for architectural reasons. Like people want to do things. You, houses look really silly with a fifteen foot roof on, on a garage. Um, if it's over twenty, it's gonna count. So what's gonna happen is over twenty, that whole second piece of a garage is gonna be floor area. And what that does. Is that says if you're gonna build it, then you either need to count it against the cap. And you're gonna be able to build less. Or you need to finish it and use it. I don't think we really care if they finish it and use it. What we care about is controlling the size of the building. And so that the happy medium was to establish some, everything under twenty feet is okay, that doesn't count. But once you exceed that twenty, now you can extend that second floor across and that needs to count. That's the spirit of it. That's what it means. The purpose of this entire discussion. Is for everybody to understand the spirit of what it means and try and understand. What we've done and why and potentially find problems with it. That's absolutely fine. I, I don't, I don't know why we're fortunate thereof is there. Um, but I also don't see that it does any damage. If on further reflection after the meeting, you figure out a way to read it that way, then we can get ahead of it. Um. This will determine whether or not the square footage. In that second piece of the garage, the, the second story counts, will count against it. It would only become a D variance if that caused the total number to exceed the ratio. Right. I think I, yeah, I think that, I, I, and I, and I think if the twenty foot number is. Uh, the, the, the twenty feet is what matters the most here. And I think that's what you'll be able to see from the outside. And, and again, if somebody figures out how to do it and create a playroom in here, then you know, I guess, you know.
That was my question. Why do we go to twenty feet on that when the, when the detached garage is fifteen? But it makes sense, fifteen feet would be way short on it.
Uh, weren't we trying to encourage attached garages and less detached?
So we did um, eliminate the penalty for detached, uh, attached garages. So uh, that's done by separate ordinance, but we can talk about it. So. As part of a prior effort to deal with this five hundred square foot area above garages that wasn't counting. We inserted a penalty. So if you attached a garage, you paid a fifty percent penalty on square footage. So fifty percent of the garage would count. So if you have five hundred square foot garage, two fifty would be counted against your thirty two twenty. As a result, people started to move their garages away from the house by the bare minimum based on construction code, which is Jordan. Five feet. And as a result of that five foot, you now wound up with like something that was detached. But kind of felt like it was attached, particularly once people started putting the roofed area. Then they started to build those porta shares and I don't think that's the right way to pronounce it, but that's a. What is it?
Porta co-share.
Porta co-share?
Yeah.
Very fancy frame. Uh, right. So those were the end results, right? So thi- this well-intended policy created all these other problems.
Well, it created more. Impermeable surface.
It did, it did. So you know, you know, those. Let me say it right. So, so those weren't, weren't. Were penalized for having them, but because our lot coverage numbers um, are so liberal.
With longer driveways to, to the.
You, so you wind up with that and exactly. We don't, right, a whole bunch of bad things happened. We're trying to fix all that here. That's, that's what all this, that's what all this is.
That hasn't been addressed yet, but it will.
The lot coverage issue. So. You know, and I've had people ask me about setbacks and some other things. What we tried to address this round was the stuff that we thought was low hanging fruit. The issue with regard to lot coverage, um, you know, is technical. Because you can't just say, well, let's reduce it by ten percent. What you need to do is you actually do some sort of feasibility. To understand what people are developing and what people need to be able to develop as a matter of right without getting a variance. So that you don't encumber people from redeveloping their property. As I understand the rules today, there was so much reliance on floor area ratio and the cap. That there is a lot of flexibility with regard to lot coverage. My house would be an example, a ranch, right? You can develop a ranch in Fairhaven because we're very liberal lot coverage. No one does. We don't really need it anymore. Um, but the idea was, well, we're not worried about somebody building a ranch or using too much of the lot. Because we've captured containment of the size of the structure from floor area ratio. That's what I believe in. Um, so we can look again at lot coverage, we can look again at setbacks and other things. Um, and should, um, but that was not done as part of this framework.
Doug, with this uh. This area that you're talking about, if you have a, if you have a two story house. And a living room that's two stories high.
Yes.
Where does that fall in terms of the airspace above on the second penalty?
It can't, you should count it as like a two story foyer.
Yeah, two story foyer. Is that, is, are, is that considered, are you counting the airspace in the floor area?
So the, the, it hasn't changed in terms of what's, what's happening. But as part of the effort to contain, contain the bulk of structure previously. There, within the ordinances, it is determined that if you could fit two stories in the space. Then it counts as two stories. So if you have a two story, a true two story foyer, uh, Robert Adler famously tested that here. Seven or eight years ago, there was a great room which was like nineteen and a half feet tall, right? Marty's not. And we were like, that's a random number. And he explained why. And it was because once I go an extra six inches. You're gonna count it as double the space and that's not my plan. It's not gonna be finished that I want it. And you know, that's fine. That was the limit. That's how tall you can build it. Um.
I think we do clarify that though, the definition, you say sterile openings and vaulted ceilings.
That's what was already there. That didn't change. It shows that the entire thing has been changed, but it, that was already there.
Well, if you're trying to control that of the house, I think that's important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, look, the, the idea is that um, most people that develop in Fairhaven don't want to come to this, right? And so what they want to know is they want to know, what can I do? Four mayors, three mayors before Doug, you know, have, have said to me, hey, people come to me and they just want to know what they can do and they don't understand. How to figure it out. And some people would argue, they don't even want to have to go to an architect. They think they should be able to read the ordinances and figure it out. I think that's an unfair expectation. But the bottom line is that you should be able to go to five architects. And they should be able to tell you exactly the same thing in terms of what you can do. And we know because we see it all the time. The, the minute an out of town architect comes in, nothing lines up. Because our ordinances are very hard and you need to spend time with it to understand it. And it's only the five to ten regulars. That really get it, that measure it consistently and treat it right. Um, you know, and even that, I mean, I don't want to go into war stories about things that were excluded over the years. But the architects got very creative and stuck some things past. Um, and we hope we, we've. Bub those holes.
Doug, I have a question. That, how do we determine that is not accessible to a second story? I mean, you could put a wall up there and say it's not accessible. We know that. That's a garment that Michigan, you can just always put a door in it. How do we determine that it is not accessible to second story? Cause then right afterwards, I don't, I remember this discussion that we had, like basically. I don't care if there's a wall, you know, zipper clarification, all areas within the structure that could be construed to be four. We don't care if there's a wall that we're gonna count anyway.
Well.
Could open. So why do we have the?
Well, so. Right. So remember that. If it's accessible and it's twenty feet or less, it counts. Because now my second story is giving access, that counts. If it's twenty feet or less and it's not attached, it does not count.
Right. The question is, what do we, how do we define not accessible?
Well, it would be in the plan. So for this example of something called it nineteen and a half feet. If it were not shown on the plans with a door to access the second story. You could, you could build it and it wouldn't count against floor area. If you built it at twenty one feet, whether it was accessible or not, it would count.
But if I. But if I.
Hmm, if it was nineteen and they showed an access, a hatch.
It would count.
It would count. Maybe you're saying it's that it's likely to not be shown and then easily opened.
Yeah.
That's why I thought, like, I I had thoughts, and I maybe misremembered. But I thought we said that we'll just count it anyway, whether you have a door there or not, thinking that in the future, somebody would just open.
But but that's where, that's where the four clarification comes in. Because four clarification says, if it could be built. Regardless of how it's actually constructed, couldn't be finished and used, it counts. Yeah, this is, this is outside of five, but what it, what it's intending to say is. Getting to your question, Peter, i- it, what does it mean to be accessible or not? This four clarification doesn't matter. If it could be finished, then it's going to count. You're not going to be able to say, I can't access it, therefore it doesn't count.
Okay, so that's right, like screened porches. Are they now counted based on the last sentence of the first paragraph of the floor area definition?
Okay.
Where the roof connects to the structure where there are no walls. Measured to where there is a minimum height of thirty inches measured from the floor to the bottom of the roof rafters.
No. But no- nothing in there was intended to sweep in screened in porches.
Okay, but does it? I'm not sure what that is, if it's not a screened in porch.
Why?
If it's not a porch. It's an area where roof connects to the.
No, 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 that that's just where a, that's where a roof meets the wall. Because there isn't, so this is the first story, this is the second story, let the record reflect, I have two cell phones in my hand. This is one story, this is two stories. Because it's a, it's an exterior wall. When I don't have an exterior wall, I have a roof. It's intended to be the intersection of these two things. That's all it's talking about. Where a roof connects to the structure, where there are no walls, cause on the second story, there's no walls.
Okay.
There's no, there's no wall at that gap. Second floor, there's no wall. It's roof meets floor. That's what it means. We love it, we love it up?
So does that? Mean there's? Okay. Is the ball stories not half stories?
A half story can only be. An attic. The basement's not gonna have that problem.
Okay, so when you have the.
Attic's gonna be dealt with one of two ways. Either it's gonna be a, a, a. What do we call it? I I I keep wanting to use the H word, I'm not gonna use it again, not gonna use it. So we have, I hate those, sorry. So we have a. An attic that is excluded from including floor area is one that meets the uh seven foot definition. There there's a term in here, I'm just, you've got me so turned around. Um, so an attic is either going to qualify to be finished with a big staircase that won't count against the cap. Or it won't have a staircase and it's a half story. Or it will have more than 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 uh than one third and it'll count as a full story.
So if if the attic counts as a full story. The area that's going to be counted in that attic. Is to the point where. The. Roof. Is more than thirty inches above the floor.
Where the measurement from the floor to the bottom of the roof, Joyce, is thirty inches and greater.
Yeah, okay. So. I just see. A little confusion in the calculation there because you've got. And. An area. With a minimum height of seven feet above the floor. That's used to determine. Whether it is. An attic that counts as a story or not. But then separate from that, you're counting. All of the area in that.
You're only counting, you're only counting if it doesn't satisfy the definition of being excluded.
I I understand that, but what I'm saying is you sort of have two different. It's, it it leaves. In my mind, the possibility for people to inflate the. Area in that camping attic. Where? The height is. Over seven feet. With the area in that camping attic. Where the height is. Over thirty inches.
It all counts. The penalty for not meeting the one-third standard is that you go out with a thirty inch number and it counts as a story.
I understand that.
Okay.
But. Are there gonna be people, be people who don't understand that?
Sure.
Who think that only even once they expand that area, the seven feet to the. Ceiling. Above one-third of the floor below. Are they going to think that? That's the number? Of square feet that they're calculating, or are they going to go to this other section and say? I'm counting it out to where? There's thirty inches above. You see what I I'm saying?
I think, I don't think it lends itself to that. Misconstruing it. Certainly, you can probably misconstrue.
Right.
And we see it all the time. You you miscalculated this.
You say that's where zoning's gonna catch it, but.
I I.
Having been here and seen what doesn't get caught.
Well, I, yeah, uh, yes, that's all that's possible. But the truth is that. When read, understanding the intent, it's A or B, there is no C. And the construction department and zoning department is familiar with not only what we've written. But why we've written it, and so it will be up to them to interpret it and to help people understand it. But but the problem now is that if if that's what it is, that none of this, none of this is really worth it, because that all of it can be manipulated, misconstrued. Um, what what you need to understand, I think. Is that the process of changing stuff is so complicated. That you can get caught up in any one of these things, and in fact, for ten years we did, and that's why it never happened. Frankly, it was through Josh's leadership that we managed to get refocused and push, push through some of this stuff. I I don't think any, anyone who was involved is gonna say it's perfect, because we recognize that words themselves are so. Able to be manipulated and misunderstood, that there's gotta be issues.
We we thought we had it. Written. Mike did a lot of help with the writing of this, and then we involved. Nick and Joe and stuff, and then we wound up having to rewrite so much stuff.
And every time we did it, we made it better, and we made it clearer, and every time we left it, we thought it was done, and every time we came back, we found new things. And so that's just the process. And if you think the conversation's tedious, imagine the process. It was very, very tedious.
We spent hours on what, you spent hours on one definition, and it's never gonna be perfect. The government's always gonna find a hole in it, that's why. Well, we wanted to get something out that looked good in the works here, and we can, you know, the rotation is everything.
So what I'm envisioning is for any attic plan, there'll be at least two lines, one will be a seven foot line. They're gonna plot the attic definition, the next one will be a thirty inch line, or two and a half foot line.
For the floor area.
For the floor area.
Right.
As long as they show both lines.
Well, you won't need the thirty inch line. If you qualify as an excluded attic or purpose, right?
Yeah.
But if you show both, then you can do either one. Um, you're not gonna find people. Intending to fall into the full story. That'll be by accident. What the rub here is not new stuff. New stuff will nail this, because people are gonna love finishing these spaces. I've been selling this all over town. Cause this is untapped potential that everybody should have, and it's great. Um, but the truth is, it's the existing structure. That were not built around this, that are going to be thirty-two percent, and people are gonna be pissed. And they're gonna show up, and what they're gonna say, and I invite them to do so, is that we are so close. And we need the intent, and it's there, and we'd like to finish it, and it's gonna be real hard to say to somebody with an existing attic. That doesn't look like a third story, that we wouldn't allow them to finish it, just like everybody else. Um, that's yet to come. But I think the reason to go through it tonight and to really. We can't do this with them, right? The most painful conversations that we have are when we're doing this with an applicant, and they're like. Why don't you guys know what the rules are, right? Um, so it would be really good if we sort of digested it and continued to sort of make sure that we understand it. Um, you know, it's funny, we have the annual report to talk about, and there was um one applicant that withdrew their plans. Because of a huge fight over this issue. The zoning officer had interpreted it one way, told them to not change the structure at all, but to just move the walls. And that was interior walls, which would then change the way the house would be measured, so that they would avoid a D or whatever the thing was. We got into it here, it was a big thing, they withdrew. You know what they did with their house? They knocked it down.
But like the last original house.
At the end of the day, it won't happen again, because now we're all on the same page. But that was one of the things that finally pushed to make this happen, because that was so unjust.
That was horrible.
It was bad.
Yeah, it's sad to see that house go. The house, the amount of trees they took down there as well.
You know, it's so, you get used to it over time, and I I don't, I don't fall in love with any one of the houses. But what bothers me the most is that a resident that had been here a long time, that had spent a lot of money, that wanted to do the right thing. That came all the way to the zoning board asking for what they thought was reasonable, or they wouldn't have been here to begin with. Wouldn't get the clarity as to even how we viewed their proposal. It was mad.
Yeah.
Truly mad.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the original version of my house. The with the garage attached with the driver that goes around the back. I think that's, that's, I mean, there's a couple of caves left that we're doing, but that was one of the last.
I I don't mean to put it, by the way, I think that well, renovated structures are far better. Than a brand new house in almost all cases. And they become so creative and unique, and you drive around and everything looks different, right? And that's because people are working with structures. Okay. Do we, do we cross that?
Yeah.
We're good? All right, the floor area ratio um is now, it's just. The area of all floors. I've been just wondering about the definition that was removed. So it basically takes the floor area, which is that that definition we just did. To the total area. I don't even know why that seems changed. We didn't, I don't remember changing that.
Maybe just to incorporate the word floor.
I think we removed the word habitable, but it's not showing, it's uh, it's not the redlining, so I don't know why, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Doug, before we go on, um, I don't see a definition of front yard setback. We talk, we talk at this, we talk at this uh uh this word about measurement of front yard to the stoop. And then we talk about it being six inches in height, uh, minimum thickness is not a qualified. But I don't see any definition of front yard setback or how we address that issue.
Well, I think that what, I think in the definition, it's under setback. It's it's setback, so it's, it's, we just didn't get to. But but Skip, we did not specifically try to resolve or clarify the issue about the extension. But why don't we address that when we get to it ultimately?
Okay.
So. Okay, so grade, average existing, and average existing, right? So this basically, I I had a different idea of what I wanted to do with this. This wound up to me what Nick and Joe wanted to do. Um, and it's effectively um codified the method that they use now. Um, and but but what we've done is we take in this defined term, and now we've applied it universally across the ordinances. Because the ordinances used to use a whole bunch of different ways to refer to this grade, the existing grade. And so now we've got one definition tied to everything altogether. But effectively, what it says is the grade that's out there today before a construction project is the grade that we use for all other measurements. Grade existing, existing grades, more of the same, finished grade, more of the same. Habitable floor area is deleted altogether, because now we're just using floor area. The word habitable is completely stripped from the ordinance. We don't care, we never cared, we've never cared. This is my big debate with Theresa. Why do you care what's hap-? We don't, we don't care what's happening on the inside. But our rules are set up to use the word habitable and to use that to tie together all of the bulk restrictions. We've got to remove the word so there's no confusion, and we're trying to regulate the size of structures. Habitual floor ratio, habitable room, anything with habitable comes in. So, uh, Skip, you were asking about the front yard setback and the measurement to six inches, right?
I like, I don't see it. You know, I I understand what we do in relation to the setback compared to the other houses on the street. Uh, that all makes sense, but I don't see anything in there that defines where we measure the front back setback.
I think that this comes from the accessory building possession, which talks about eliminated, unfortunately, it's eliminated, so. I don't think you're gonna add it, so we've lost.
The front yard setback is measured to blank. It it should be.
No, it's, it's, well, I shouldn't say it that way. Setback is perpendicular to such lines at the point where the building is closest to such a line. So what is the definition of going? Like, it it may be a combination, and again, it wasn't part of the process. But it may be a combination, if you get through your yard, your side, your rear inside, what your left is.
Yeah, but at some point, it was put in the code, because there are existing, I was one of which is my own, which would be, would be setback is to the house. At some point from the fifties till now, that can change to say six inches, for six inch step. Where, where does that say? We've always done it, I mean, it's what appears on the board, and we've always known this. Right, the way I'm reading it is. That measurement was pulled from accessory buildings and structures. Because what projects past. The wall of the house that we measure to is a porch deck patio or similar structure. Designed to a joint or as part of the principal building. Because that's. This is in accessory buildings and structures in the ordinance, not in the definition, thirty to seven.
And we modified it?
Yeah, we removed it. In letter H.
I don't know why.
Well, I should understand removing the second half of that. Because that was the hundred square foot.
Yeah.
But basically, where we run into. Measuring the setback, everybody measures to the exterior wall initially. And then we say, well, you've got this thing that's hanging out there, whatever it happens to be. And what it happens to be is a porch deck patio or similar structure designed to a joint or as part of the principal building. But that falls under accessory buildings and structures. So technically, in the end, it doesn't even really affect. So the front yard setback, cause there's no front yard setback for an extract accessory structure, cause there's no accessory structure.
That, no, 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 that's the answer. The answer is that the. Change that was intended to be eliminated was the hundred square foot exception, which is the second sentence. The first sentence, the first sentence was always there and has been erroneously omitted.
Yeah.
That is, that needs to go back.
So if that comes back. Then we're still. I, and I, I never got dug even this far into it. But we're still basing that six inch, that that anything above six inches. But we're still basing that six inch, that, that anything above six inches. This is an accessory setback.
No, it's not.
No, it should all adhere to the yard requirements or accessory structure.
Were an accessory structure, there is no front yard setback for an accessory structure. Or an accessory structure, because you can't have an accessory structure in the front yard. So it, it's, it, I know it's, it's twisted and convoluted, that's not the way.
You couldn't say principal structure then, huh?
I don't know what it should say or where it should fall. Maybe something that needs to be fixed. First, first, I would say we need to get that sentence back for now. And then if, if anybody has some questions about beyond that. You know, talk about it later, but I think. First things first, you gotta get that sentence.
I, I wonder where that was before we put that in the square foot thing in a couple of years.
I think that the hundred square foot is put at the end of this, that could be researched. And we didn't spend any time with this, we just, we just said that that's coming out. And we didn't pay attention to whether there might have been excess removed, it wasn't intended to be removed. I didn't realize, I don't know why it was a part of it, I never realized.
But, but Al makes a point that what does accessory structure have to do with the front yard setback?
Okay, Al, you got a homework assignment. This is you, I want you to take this, I want you to turn it in your head, and I want you to come back with what it should say. Because what we want it to say.
Well, here, here's the thing, if. If I come back with what it should say, what it should say may not be here in accessory structure ordinance anymore. It may be in the definition, no, actually not definition, yeah, no, definition of where you measured.
Look, at the end of the day, this can go back, because it wasn't part of what it was supposed to be. If the six inches that we, if the six inches that we use for the front step is originating from here, then let's fix it. And, and the idea is that once you start putting steps. It needs to count for the front yard setback, that's the idea, and six inches is just the point at which it started. By the way, at thirty inches of F F E, the risk associated with this is seriously diminished. But nevertheless, it was not our intent to create new problems, and that's something that we've always relied on, so let's fix it. You got the ball, okay?
Well, I agree with you though, I think if you're looking for the setback to a principal structure, you probably don't look to the accessory structure section.
I, I, I agree, I, I, and I'm not sure this is the only place it is, by the way, but I do think that. This, this sentence being deleted is, was, was erroneous.
That's why I thought it should be in definitions.
I don't disagree, start by getting that sentence back. And then I'll do some homework and if you have some opinions on it.
Do both at one time, and we're gonna present to council to consider. The, the reversion of the one sentence unless there's a reason we can think of, and then, and then clear, clearing up and relocating whatever we need. To confirm that we start measuring at anything above six inches.
If we change this, if we put this back in, do we have to go through the whole? Council planning.
But it's not hard, they just, they, they just talk it through, they send it to the planning board, planning board's here. Uh, they look at it, they, they call you and Al, and you guys explain to them why it happened, and you know, it's done.
Second.
Just like we did with this.
Now that we, now that we have, now that we're missing this though. And this has been codified. It's been voted in and blessed, what happens to projects that fall between now? And whenever this gets fixed.
There's, there, to the extent that this was the only place. That it clarified where you measure a setback to, which is my modeling to me, I'm not accepting that. But if it's true, then we have no clarification inside, by the way, I'm not sure as part of the accessory buildings, if this ever was useful. But we used it, so we have all. You went, you got, who got, who gets credit? Jordan, maybe you can help us just review to try and understand, I mean, I think if we even do some searching, we can figure out whether or not it's somewhere else.
I don't think so, because I learned a little bit later that you lied that way and I always. Related back to this one section, accessory structure.
So then there's gotta be something which says that where you measure it to, what's that?
It could exist. I don't know, maybe Nick knows.
That's definitely silly. Whatever. I'm, I'm, I'm just about done, so, I mean.
It's still there though, in the moment where we live, but I mean, we don't have a measurement of the front yard setback, because we deleted it.
We're not, we're so much better than where we were before, no, I'm not worried, okay, not worried.
It wasn't a section that was, a definition that was changed here, but. I just noticed that in the setback definition. It's any front side or rear lot line, and I think it should be rear lot line, I don't know if that's a typo in this or if that's a.
No, I, I suspect it's in the edits, but okay, we gotta fix that too. Also on your list. Okay, so the, uh, what we tried to do was setback front yard comma prevailing. And we created the idea of a prevailing front yard setback for new construction. We did limit the application only to new construction. So if you're in a neighborhood where twenty-five feet is what's required by the zone and you sit forty feet back. Like everybody else, you can build a porch in front of your house, even though no one else has one, because twenty-five feet is the minimum. But if you're subdividing that property and everybody sits at forty feet, you are not going to be able to push it forward to twenty-five. This prevailing front yard setback will establish a more restrictive standard, which will be determined based on the neighbors on your side.
That one's. Got the potential to change that. You can get. A front yard setback. It, it, for new construction.
It'll match the existing.
That'll match the existing neighborhood, but then. Six months later, somebody on their existing house builds a porch.
Yeah, it could, uh, it could change definition of your. prevailing, then the next person comes in that was already with new construction, where will they put theirs, it could. Likely, probably not.
No, no, no.
Porches are popular.
No, but if the change, if the changes are supposed to change, the idea is that you don't wanna be proud of the existing development. If the existing development moves forward, because it's permitted to move forward, then what we decide is proud is changing.
We're also talking about some extreme lives, like, all right, the age of the house, and then for it to be warranted to be knocked down, I mean. Long after we might be all gone.
Uh, like, these are all the rabbit holes, we've been down most of them, Al's found a new, new ones, I've never. Yes, they, they, all that's possible, I'm, I'm just, I'm reacting to the idea that that's a bad thing, actually, I think it's, it's fine.
What is the expectation for how someone presents this for every new house? Are they surveying each property or deploying from an aerial?
So we have. So, so we shouldn't use that term, we, we talked about that, um. With zoning, and so the ideas were thrown out of the different things you could do. With lasers these days, most architects can actually nail it. And a surveyor can obviously nail it, and you can do it without stepping on somebody else's property background. It needs to be measured correctly though, right? So like the six inches issues and all those.
Yeah, it's not the curb, it's property.
So, so here's the thing, that's gonna, that's gonna play out the way that all of the other rules have played out over time. Right now, existing grade is fluid. And how they measure that is actually made up in terms of how they do it as a practical matter, they can figure this out. We talked about codifying something and I would have been satisfied with a certification. Give me an architect certification, give me a surveyor certification, I don't think that anybody should be asked to do multiple surveys. I, I don't think that we exactly identified how it was gonna pass, right?
I don't think we, we, we said anything, it's like, this is what it is, it's, it's up to them, we're not requiring surveys from adjacent.
They regularly make these calls, and so they'll just have to figure out what they're gonna accept. We've, we've, we've said very clearly, we're not trying to spend thousands of dollars unnecessarily. And you know, you know, you know, everybody knows. It's, it's gotta pass a smell test, you know, um. Well, at the end of the day, this should avoid, I mean, you know, take the, take the two odd subdivision that's happening under the road right now in slow motion. Because it was a year ago that I first realized where they were gonna be, you know, the houses sit in front of the two other houses by fifteen feet. What this was gonna do is push it back, if it's off a foot because somebody measured it wrong, it's still gonna be a heck of a lot better. Um, and, and they'll, they'll work it out, and they work these things out all the time. Habitable floor, and no one knows what it meant, yet they were approved and trying to go with that. What do we got? So it's important to know that, um. The cellars and crawl spaces are not a story and they're also not a half story. What you're gonna get is you're gonna get a two and a half foot structure. If, if you insert either a, 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 an attic that counts as a, as a story or a basement. I don't know why I went there, forget it, forget it. Oh, oh, yeah, so there's, so there's a few other things that we change. Um, a few of these are in here because they're removed for habitable. Uh, this is new construction residential zone with prevailing front yard setback. So that's both in the definition and it's as, it's part of that particular wording where it was incorporated. The removal of that uh, subsection H. Is intended to remove the exception for a hundred square foot in the front yard setback. And for those not familiar, this exception was intended to create sort of this soft opportunity to create a porch of some sort. Which, which didn't have a roof, but what wound up happening was this was used. To support developing a stairway inside of the front yard setback. And when you allow people to do that, you effectively allow them to press the house, the entire structure to the line. And then run all those stairs towards the street. So that's eliminated, no longer an exception. Building height, average, and just grade. Finish floor elevation, maybe that's the resolution right there, guys. Because it's now in an actual section as opposed to just in the definitions. Yeah, yeah, so in that section, like the porch table C, under height indication, and I think by doing this, it addresses what you were concerned about, it being only in the definition.
And there were no changes to any of the tables?
Um, you know, just over the last few months, somebody had noticed an error, but I think that that got changed. Independently, the only change in here. Related to, um. One of the notes. One of the notes. I think including the habitable.
Yeah, it's on the last page.
Yep, number twenty-two.
I was looking at thirty-seven.
Yeah, so twenty-two's, I don't know why this isn't redlined, twenty-two's added to say that wherever habitable is used, it's now just floor area. What was the other thing you noted? What was the other one?
That, that's the same one, one different.
Oh, and then on the, uh, the application, they also removed the word habitable around. So I think that was a great opportunity for everybody to understand how hard this is.
That's not true, it was much longer than that.
It was, it was. But, but, um. I, I, you know, it's, it's my sincere hope that, um, houses that are developed pursuant to the new standards. Are going to, um, acclimate to the surrounding communities a lot better. Than the ones, or some of the ones that have been developed in these. Um, it's also, I think, uh, the hope. That we wind up with houses that are not really smaller in terms of livability. But rather smaller in terms of excess space that's used for storage or stuff. Um, at least legally, and, and maybe eliminate or minimize people's desire to do things in the beginning. Uh, but I think that the addition of being able to develop inside of the attic is great. Um, and the concern about, um, the first floor elevation, which we didn't really talk about. Is that, um, there's, there's a requirement when you do, uh, a foundation dig, that you're two feet above mean high water. And so what's happening is that when you hit that water, you're setting. How high up the basement would need to come in order to get seven, eight, nine, ten for clear. And so that's, that's where I believe to be the origin of these basements coming up out of the community. Uh, the people have the attic space instead, um, and they will have an opportunity to build lower basements. And they will still be able to meet the F F E.
Step forth in your chart.
Don't think it is. It's consistent across.
Trying to go back to resolution, your issue. Site plan with someone that's, this has to be a part of your checklist.
Let's do this, but let's, let's rather than, let's collect these handful of things. Let's, let's nail them, let's clarify them, and then we'll write a letter to council and we'll add the, the things that we're seeing. And we'll have council to look at it and, and clean it up as needed. Um, and moving forward, you know, part of the idea here tonight was to get a better understanding of what it is. Um, you know, we're gonna continue to listen, you know, and Jordan, as you talk to people, we're gonna try and understand where things are difficult. I think that all of us have, um, our eyes open, which is hard to have that be in particular. Uh, because we try to be really strict, because it's been really abused. Um, but there's going to be a lot of questions as to whether or not the right number is newer than that, and so, you know. Well, I, I think the real rub is gonna be, people want more distance. Because more distance gives you more window space and a whole bunch of other things, the problem is it comes with consequences. Um, and so, uh, it'll, it'll be interesting to see where it lays out, but, but you know, it's all work in progress, we can tweak it later if we have to. Everybody good? Any questions from you guys in the back? Really, really awesome that you guys came, we really appreciate it, thank you too, um. Good conversation, okay, um, you didn't wanna run us through our admin?
Yeah, let's go. Actually, you know what, while we're in discussion, let's skip to the annual report and then we can go over it later. Thank you to Marty and, uh, to, uh, Drew Barber, who's not here, but I'm gonna say his name, we did a fantastic job on issues on your report. I agree, uh, really well done, I don't know, you guys have read it, it's a really good summary of what we did, this is twenty twenty-one, by the way. Because of course we run several years behind. But, um, I, I don't have any more comments to make, but if anybody has read it and has any questions or comments, please, uh.
Bobby doesn't do justice to the, to the graphics at the back.
It is interesting.
It is.
It really is, that, that.
Can, can I point out, the graphics are terrific, I, I think that, um, there's a misunderstanding. As to what gets done here, I found it remarkable that this zoning board has denied. One application in two thousand seventeen. One application in two thousand nineteen, one in twenty twenty, and none in twenty twenty-one, twenty eighteen, and twenty sixteen. And I think that that is a reflection of both a really good dialogue with our applicants, because you manage to get things to where they should be. But also I think a respect for the ordinances, because people are coming in when they should. Probably had.
Although for the record, Al voted no.
Uh, you know, you gotta combine two things here, you combine the fact that we're granting variances and that we're very serious. And that means that we're making good decisions. And, and you know, that's, that shouldn't be lost on anybody, this, this, you know, tonight's not easy, like, you know, they're never, it's never easy.
One thing, I think as a result, there's a healthy avoidance. For extreme stuff that should never be brought here to begin with, right? If I did my renovation. The last thing, and you know, the way things are laid out and it's very, you know, local builders, architects, I knew exactly what my parameters were. And I did not wanna come here.
And, and, and when you can get a clear understanding and you can work within it, most people will avoid it. Um, Frank, you said something really interesting to me recently, without mentioning any names. Can you quickly tell the story of the person that had approached you that wanted to put an apartment above their garage?
Yes. Someone approached me, Ben knows I'm on here now. And, uh. Boys, they helped him kind of distaste for the board. That they couldn't put this apartment above their garage, and they said, you know, I would love to do. you know, I would love to do this, generate extra income, I put it in a college fund for my kids, so on and so forth. Which I replied, look, you bought in this neighborhood partially because houses hold their values, a nice place, it's quaint, it's charming, it's it's got all this, it's a little sort of bubble, right? And if you were to put an apartment above your garage, what do you expect would happen to the rest of the street? Everyone would come in and say, hey, so and so put it, I want one too. And before you know it, it becomes this neighborhood that's filled with these, you know, probably not. More parking.
I mean, I've been there before, we said, more parking, more intense use on a residential.
Right, and potentially transient, potentially transient people. That may or may not.
Transient, not transient.
Potentially transient people.
Oh, you can tell your friend not to waste his money. Uh, we're gonna be discussing on Monday night a short term rental ordinance that would be restricted in that type of.
Right. Yeah, well, my point was to him too, and and that's 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 good to know. My point to him too is, look, you purposely moved here for all of the benefits that I've outlined that keep your property value strong. It contributes this beautiful neighborhood, right? I grew up in Manal, and it was cookie cutter central, right? We have this beautiful neighborhood, everything is unique, and part of what we do here preserves that legacy. So why would you think that if you did this, it wouldn't translate into a slippery slope of everyone within you, in your home, going and requesting? Who wouldn't want to make extra income from a a property on the side? Everyone would, but that's not what we do.
There is, there is a genuine movement afoot, not not in fair, but but within um, New Jersey, United States.
To reform zoning.
To allow federal government to override local zoning and state government, to allow accessory, what do you call them?
Eighty years.
Eighty years, yeah, accessory dwelling.
That's true. Well, everyone, everyone knows here, I'm in the apartment business and it's a huge thing that they want to go in single family neighborhoods and basically do away with zoning in an effort to put a release valve in place for what is a structurally.
Without so many.
Right. Nevertheless, this is the, this is what I said to this.
That's a really good explanation.
Well, so what I loved about Frank's story was that basically he explained by starting with why you want to be here, with why you shouldn't be able to do that. And I think that these ordinances are tied to that as well because I think that most people come here because of the character and the value of that character is inherent in a lot of things that, you know, we think about on this one anymore, but I don't think other people think about. Why can't my house be four thousand square feet? Why can't I just, it's just gonna be my grandma in the back, you know? It it is, it is the need to have a uniform standard that maintains, but also also recognizes that we need to move forward. That balance, man, that is super, super tricky.
But uh, gosh, I think what you said was interesting about the short term rental thing because everyone knows there are a select few properties around this town that have these old structures in the back, not too dissimilar from the people that came in last time. And some of these people have, in fact, rented these Airbnbs in the summer to other people. And and granted, most of the time, it's not really people they don't physically know. It's people amongst other people. Oh, hey, you know, you're going away for the weekend, can I use this piece of your house? But it does in fact lead to this. And and again, it's a slippery slope.
Not necessarily. I see there uh, I I know one, I know two that listen to Airbnb. Um, one, I actually almost bought myself, which is now listed as pull out now, you know, come, build the house next to but next to the apartment someday. We'll sign a little house. It was bought by a a uh an LLC development person, but you know, group of people that. Yeah, uh, no, two. I looked at it. They did a really nice job on it, but it was not, it's not there for any other purpose than to rent out for short term.
So Airbnb is not just renting independent structures, but they're also renting rooms and houses. Like the advertisement, I listened to, uh, Things You Should Know, and they walk through this thing about, oh, if you're no longer using your home office, you should rent it out. If you're, you know. You're poor?
Yeah.
Oh, that's very intense. Swingly, I think, it's all of a sudden.
Gosh, well, yeah, well, how much insurance do you have to clarify? That's so gross. Dude, um, will will the ordinance be focused on the the rental, the nature of it as a rental? Or will it be like house structure apartment? Like, would you prevent somebody from renting a room?
Uh, so I think, I think part of that is why we're moving into workshop to discuss it, but the I think the one issue we're having is um the habitat for humanity house is set up in a way which the it's a side by side structure. I think it's landlord tenant. So the landlord is actually renting one of the.
Right, that's exactly.
One of the thoughts, so it somehow we have to fit that within the ordinance.
How short term?
Short term. So I believe the um once hit its workout, there's a little bit of difference of opinion. What I threw out there is I thought I was worried about the summer length, so I wanted it to be over a hundred twenty.
I love that. I thought that was fantastic. Todd and I first discussed it when I brought it up to him a couple months ago. And we thought thirty days, but when you brought it up at at the first meeting to say that, I thought this was.
So the concern, which I thought was a was a legitimate concern, uh, which Captain Rodriguez brought up, brought up, was what about the family that's just renovating their house? And I agree with that. Uh, my thought in that situation is you you rent for four months.
Renovations take longer than that.
Usually, and even if you don't take four months, we don't want these landlord situations to be in the business of two months, two months, two months, two months. So I'm assuming when we when we have this, they're gonna have to register with some sort of permitting or something like that.
Star rental that.
Listen, or you go live at the Molly Pitcher. My house was almost not done in time, and I was either gonna rent a little carriage house thing in rooms and we're always gonna go live at the Molly Pitcher. And you add it up, the cost isn't much different.
At at the end of the day, you have to find a way to. You have, you have to set a rule based on most. You can't set a rule for everybody. And you may catch somebody up, but you know, you can't rule, you know, and expect it to be perfect. You know, we spent all night on that. Um, Josh, and there are a bunch of towns that have done this now. So you've got, everybody's tested it a little bit. Uh, I don't know uh whether or not that stuff's good, but I know it's uh, it's it's a hot topic.
Well, I thi- I think you may find, and I know I encountered this, you know, one of my other clients, where we had a number of mul- multiple dwellers, and and the difficulty was no one could ever come on and and improve it because it wasn't performing. We ended up, the original idea was to try to do something that compared to the Mount Laurel. They call, you know, you've got, you've got some of the seashore houses, you've got the principal structure, and then these like little I'll I'll call them, you know, cabins, to be to be politically correct, little cabins on the back. And at one point in time, it looked like we might get some bonus, if you will, for our Mount Laurel housing. And what they ended up doing was saying, look, you put it down to no more than two. And the accessory dwelling is brought up to the other, the other residential accessory dwelling is brought up to code. Take off the other ones, you know, we were we were decreasing the intensive use. And then deed restrict that for a minimum period of, for for a period of time. We will house him for fifty-five and older. Not, you know, not for not for grandma or or something like that, but to do it that way. It depends on what your issue is. If you don't have a lot of those things and you're just gonna create them, that's a bigger problem.
Unfortunately, that though, I didn't force one fifty, I'm fifty-four, is that allowed, you know?
Well, I mean.
You know what I mean?
It requires you to, you know, that when someone comes in, they're gonna have to get some type of affirmative to do those things.
That's that's usually what it is, right?
Yeah, and that's usually how you do it, like anything else.
Changes of each tenant.
That doesn't mean that somebody doesn't, you know, come in one night, leave with somebody twenty-seven, just the next morning. Again, I said, enforcement should not bog you guys down. That's an important issue. I can't tell you how many times in some some municipality of representative residences have reported. The garage door goes down, never goes up again. And then two years later, the tax assessor comes in, they invite them in, and they say, oh, yeah, it's a finished living room.
Close his name. Hey, on on third street. Remember that one? A little red house, not there anymore?
No, sorry.
Yeah.
But if you don't have.
The garage, the garage.
Had a wall behind it.
The pool that wasn't permitted, and the garage with the wall, the garage door with the wall behind it.
Pushing backyard in public areas behind.
Yeah, yeah. Um, speaking of enforcement, I don't want to get off the 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 short term rental is a bugbear of mine, of mine, but but we talking about enforcement, there is something here that I just wanted to ask about, and I know it's a repeat funding in almost every uh annual reports, since you've got a season on the board. Enhanced enforcement requirement of as-built surveys to ensure code compliance, it's basically, did they build what we thought they were supposed to build? Now, I've always been told, oh, yeah, an annual survey is done, but I've also seen tons of construction projects where show me that survey. I I can't find it. I've even asked Nick this. I says, Nick, if you tell, if I say reduce the annual survey for that, that's a street crime, you can? And he can't. And that that's that's uh something that's always bothered me. It and this will show up in in when Marty and I did the twenty twenty-two report, we'll put that in there again. This, I think enforcement of what was built is somewhere real relevant, so that that mean what you what you need to require to do is in, you know, restrictions. In addition to that, very compliant is the submission of the aspect of. As well, and that, and then you don't get out of the compliance, that might be.
I wonder if we have a communication issue here. Okay. Repeat finding, enhanced enforcement and requirement of an as-built survey to ensure code compliance, including subway. So we don't require that now.
I don't know. I know we don't require, this came up in our discussions very much benefit when we started talking about um, grade and elevations and mounting, et cetera, et cetera. And I asked Nick, so how do you know that they that this is the, he go, I said, do you do a a a foundation survey? Do certify the foundation height? He said, no, he said, we could, but we don't. I said, so you have no idea what people build? They told you they did this.
Well, I don't know that that is exactly correct. That I think what they have told me is that they do components of checking, including setting that foundation height against the grade. Now, everything's gonna change a little bit now based on the new rules. But I think what they have is I think that they have components of verification that are not all on a new as-built survey. Like, it might cost you a thousand dollars to get Tom Sentry to come out and redo a survey and spot everything where it is. But if the if the requirements have been satisfied to the construction department satisfaction through other individual steps along the way, I don't know that, we don't have a requirement that I'm aware of, that you then go back and confirm it at an as-built survey. And and I, and it's 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 an extra expense. And I, we shouldn't, I I don't know why we would need it, as long as it'd be important along the way.
I've been, I suppose you're using the term bar, which is an as-built survey. Now, make it as a condition of your approval, you know, to confirm prior to permits being issued, that you know, grade was done, whatever, whatever. That's resolution compliance, and I agree with that. And I'm wondering what to what extent that the words, I'm gonna say, I've never put that into a, as put in as-built survey.
No.
Resolutions.
It it's the term that that Nick has told me in personal conversations when I said, how do we know that that what was? He said, oh, we get an as-built survey. I said, really? So I can, we will request one? And he couldn't go any further than that. He goes, well, sometimes we don't, we give it conditional and then, you know, so it's something, okay, so you're telling me that we don't do that?
Well, I'll give you an example. So the ridge height is gonna be capped at thirty, thirty-two or thirty-five, depending on its own, right? They confirmed that it is that. It's not gonna show on an as-built survey, but that's a component of confirming that they have met the zoning standards. So
the things, the things that now, as you've identified, things like the existing grade. That's you're gonna need to to establish, you know, finish grade. You're gonna need to establish thirty inches from those things, but those things are gonna require genuine documentation from someone.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's there. I think we're having, uh, just just talking, uh, across each other. I want to point out that we did note in the new ordinances that elevation issues need to be translated relative to curb height. So for residents that are concerned, the plans will now contain the information of, based on what the curb height is, how high things should be. So since first floor elevation's thirty inches, you'll know that the average existing grade is relative to the curb. So let's say it's two feet above the curb. Now you know thirty inches above that is maximum FFA. You can go out with a shoot, a measuring stick and a laser, and without going on the property, verify that it is what it should be. We've bought to get that in there because we have residents that have stood outside of homes and said, this doesn't feel right. And it is. And they, it's great to give them an opportunity to pile the laser and be able to verify, honest to God, it was intended to try and help people what you're just saying right now.
Measuring stick and a laser?
Come on.
We had to fight him with somebody, let's put it that way.
Major problem. Major problem. But you say? You were saying?
I would say what?
We done?
Go, go.
We're done. You had motion?
I make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one second. General report. It's a motion and a second? Yeah.
Pleasant?
Yes.
San Antonio? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Oh, yeah, second, but yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Pincella?
Yes.
Mr. Neder?
Yes. Great. Um, just on an open, the twenty twenty-two annual report, Mr. Ryan and myself will be undertaking this peculiar effort, um, don't expect such a normal, I'm not so good with graphs, maybe Marty's better. But um, Sandy, if you can find time to get me whatever you can.
The president. I think Sandy already said.
Did you? Well, I I I won't. We endeavor, by the way, as everybody always does, we never gets done.
Love that word, endeavor.
I get endeavor.
Good for you.
Good for you.
We endeavor to have this, have the twenty twenty-two report completed before the end of twenty twenty. Anyway, uh, moving on. A couple of items to clean up. Approval is March, March second, twenty twenty-three meeting. Um, Sandy has them attached in long form. Uh, I have read them. I don't have any comments or changes to make, so they're probably motion to accept the meetings, the minutes as submitted for the factory.
Shannon Pleasant?
Yes.
Good job.
Mr. Angelo? Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Pincella?
Yes. Uh, resolution approvals, Sherella Brown, sixteen Church Street. I make a motion to accept the resolution as submitted.
Ms. Shetland?
Yes.
Angela, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Pincella?
Yeah. Uh, resolution to Didi Taylor, eleven Prince Walk, make a motion to uh approve a submit.
Mr. Pleasant?
Yeah.
Mr. Angelo, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yeah.
Mr. Pincella?
Yeah. Uh, pending approval of resolution for for Ralta. I did not hear that application, so I cannot make a motion. Tom, is there additional language that you wanted to put in that?
Uh, Ralta is the measurement of the house.
Right, yes.
Received a memorandum from um, or new engineer. Not new engineer, I guess, or new planner? Or old planner, or old planner, or old planner. Uh, verifying, I guess, the square footage. Verified the decent, well, let me, let me go step backwards. Uh, I, as I recall, and someone's gonna have to clarify, I'm not calling it exactly correctly. Uh, the broad application is almost a year old at this point. Um, the application was to uh finish a garage space um, that was existing on the plans with a fixed staircase with access. What we determined in the meeting was that it existed at square footage and the house had been approved, new construction um under a challenged interpretation of the ordinances at the time. What we said to them was that um, we understood that space to be there for them to finish. We just wanted to have an accurate measurement of what the size of the house was as it sits today. Um, it took them, so we 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 had a resolution to just confirm these measurements, and it's been sitting for six months, nine months, Mike drafted it. Um, they needed to get an architect to do what needed to be done. They did it recently. Six weeks ago. It went over to Hiron Ghul, who was our planner, and that's how far back it goes. Hiron Ghul. Was it over, it was over a year ago? It was one of those applications that carried over. We did it in twenty-two, but it originally had been submitted in twenty-one. So they done the review, so they finished it up. Hiron Ghul gave us confirmation that they agreed with the measurement at thirty-eight something. The problem was that they also said that they did not believe that the attic, the third story of the house, which has a fixed staircase, should count as habitable because the ceiling height in the attic was six foot eleven inch. I completely disagree with their interpretation of attic. I got myself all twisted up in knots, and then I decided it didn't matter any. It doesn't matter because the ordinances are changed, number one. It doesn't matter because it wasn't related to what it was that they were proposing to do that evening. They were proposing to finish in the other area. But what I struggled with was adopting a. But what I struggled with was adopting a resolution which affirms that we agree that that's the measurement of the house, cuz I don't. I wanted to have a tweak to the resolution which simply said that we had agreed that subject to a remeasurement. And verification by our planner, that we would set the number. And what I would like the resolution to say is that we accept higher and rule and the architect's confirmation. Without any independent review, that the number is the thirty-eight whatever and just get it over. I don't want somebody two years from now to throw it back at us and say, you're, I don't know why it would be relevant because the ordinances are stale now, but. Um, that's what I thought. Anybody else have any feelings on it? The only ones that are gonna vote are the ones that were here then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your cue as well. Yeah, Frank, you weren't here. You were here. So, um, you understand what I'm suggesting that we tweaked it in that way? Do you agree that that would be prudent?
Yeah.
Doug, can we, can we adopt it tonight, subject to you making that tweet?
Sure. As I took a look at the resolution. You didn't have a confirmation. You had a a blank in the number. You then had the report from the old plan, new planner. It's a different person. And, you know, I can just add add too much because I I just, what I did not know is, had that already been. Reviewed by the board? What what was the status of that resolution?
It was never circulated.
It was never circulated? Okay.
Feel like it was circulated and we all said, okay.
Yeah.
Mike tried to clean it up. I don't think we need to do anything other than approve it and let Doug add the language that confirms that we're not independently verifying.
So I I saw that. That was forwarded to me with the blank. All right, I did not know.
We're gonna cover it right now so that we can do it right now. So, uh, here in October sixth, twenty twenty-two. Due consideration, we determine the quality findings of fact. It's an R ten A applicant submitted these exhibits. The applicant say that they purchased the property in seventeen. Plans were done by the previous owner. He worked from home. Oh, is this the one with, uh, like, work from home, proposed to finish the space at the home office? No objectors. The board found that the subject property is in ten A. Provides the application to build it, provided that it was thirty-two sixteen. And it conformed with the thirty-two twenty. The application further indicates that the proposal will increase to have a player to thirty-six sixty-four. This is what the application was. Um. The board noted they had the benefit of the comment from Alana Gable. Extensive review and discussion regarding the provisions of the ordinance pertaining to the method of calculation of habitable floor area. Here we go. As a result of the review and discussion, the board found that no relief is required with regard to this matter. The board finds that the applicant has incorrectly calculated existing habitable floor area. Among other things, the calculation was based on measuring space only to knee walls rather than sill plate to sill plate. Further, the existing floor space above the garage, although unfinished, should be included within the calculation of habitable floor area pursuant to the applicable ordinance provisions. In addition, insofar as the third story is accessed from fixed stairs, the space in the attic should also be included in the calculation. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna internally react to the fact that we said what we wanted and hiring rules said that we were wrong. Okay, I'm good now. Now, it, now.
Now, is it, did they, you, well, and again, I'm so far out of the, out of the, did they? Do any construction that increased that area?
No.
So. It's size A, you didn't know what size A was.
Correct.
But as a result of a pre-existing condition, which they would be granted filed in.
Correct.
You didn't need to give them any relief.
Correct.
And all you're looking for is the number?
Correct. Probably specifically said in the discussion and we extensively discussed with the applicant. It's gonna go up by what's in the garage and because you have a fixed staircase to the third story, it all counts. What's bothering me is that we said what we thought and higher and rule has responded that we were wrong. Look.
They didn't need an variance in the first place.
They didn't. The resolution is intended to confirm that because we wanted them to be able to go to the building department and say, well, good. I still don't think that they've done that. I don't think that they can do that until this is done.
How many months has this been on? Every month is a new question.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make another proposal. It was October sixth, twenty twenty-two. So that usually you you're you're doing it the next month after that, so figure October. I'm gonna make an alternative proposal. I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose that we change this language to say that the zoning will leave it exactly as it is. The board finds that the plan was constructed for someone for the permits and that that attic should have counted. That attached is correspondence from higher and rule, calculating area including the garage and differing. With the board's opinion that the attic should be counted. The board determines that because the application did not involve finishing that space. That it does not need to determine whether it counts or not. No release required and therefore no statement is being made with regard to whether that is included or excluded. Got it?
I got it.
So that's it. So all we did was to confirm the number and the purpose of this was to let them bring this to Nick and say we don't need a variance.
Yeah. Um, I believe if I could just ask for a couple here, so I believe at one point in time, there was some request back to. The individual who prepared the email for a formal memorandum.
Yes.
Do we have that?
No.
You know when that's coming?
Well, that was only, yes.
That was only issued.
Correct.
So it didn't come to them.
Okay, I'm not, I'm sorry. Alana is no longer there, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Where she at?
No, I didn't. All right, when that memo comes in, I will take care of that. I'll take care of this.
I mean, just to cover everything. I mean, I know rules have changed. What's what's all that Latin mean then?
Fancy Latin, but we don't have a better excuse. This for them, it should have been done. Okay, you didn't get it done. But can I make a motion to approve it as you're gonna modify it?
Exactly.
Motion to approve it.
Does modify? Second.
We can actually go on this. Who was, who was here in?
Ryan Walker and Leder.
Okay.
So, Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Hopper.
Yes.
And Mr. Leder.
Yes.
Approved. Thank you.
Um, pending approval contracts.
I don't even know where we are with this.
I don't either. We keep tabling though.
Why don't you?
Is that why you're late? I think you might not have a contract because of what we discussed about fees at the beginning of the year. And what I talked about was getting clarification as to when you're on lump sum and when you can move into, hey, this is extra. I've already done this once. I don't think I ever saw revisions from you guys, but I'm happy to to do that.
I thought we were all set, so I'm sure you're.
So for clarification, I think that you were assuming within that lump sum fee. Multiple reviews of plans and applications, and that was not the intent. The intent is to cover the checklist review and the initial letter after they're complete. So you give us that, hey, it's ready to go, here's what I think about it. Everything from there is independent of that, you can come into the meeting. So if they have to come to the meeting and they're gonna revise the plans, that's a new review when you do that. If you wind up essentially saying to them, this is my report and they say, well, we're gonna change it even before the board. That's a new review. That's additional hourly work. So, I mean, I think that that's what it should be. And if you guys need it to be written that way, then that's fine. Um, that's the way, um, that's the way it was always intended.
Okay.
Okay? And hopefully with the new ordinances, we've cleaned up some of the stuff that, you know, took your time to sort of spinning around and you're recognizing. You know, where we have some short, some shortcomings, but I I think it's gonna get better. Oh.
Definitely.
And and you, it was more of the lump sum stuff. We never finished up. We agreed in principle, same thing.
Yeah, I and I'll, I'll articulate it for the, I have a problem, I didn't discuss. What we, basically, my my fee structure is, most of what I'm doing when I do for the applicants. Is, you know, billed to the applicant out of their, out of their S credit. Occasionally, there are things that I'm doing. I'm responding to things. Perhaps Sandy and I have some, have some discussion we have to do by way of, you know, what what board, what this. Reviewing things that I can't really legitimately bill to an applicant and then I bill to the municipality. At at my hourly rate. The only other thing that's in a flat rate is my meeting. You know, if we got out in fifteen minutes. It would be, I think it's five hundred, roughly. If if I, you know, if we stay till twelve o'clock, it's the same flat fee. And I think what Todd and I had discussed was, is there a way that I can take some value for some of the day-to-day stuff? If not billable, pack it into, if you will, the, instead of the meeting fee, make it more like a retainer. A retainer value of that includes the monthly meeting. And sort of day-to-day miscellaneous, miscellaneous. And and where we left off, and I I have to, I have to get off the mark, where we left off was. I don't know what it's like working with you guys at this point in time. I don't know the job. I will lose money. I don't wanna make, I don't, I don't wanna take advantage of it. I wanna get an idea of track record of how much time is sort of billed to there, billed here. I'm now at March, April. I should be able to come up with a a value that genuinely reflects the things that are now billed to the municipality. In addition to my meeting. I'll get an about, I'll get a number, I'll get an evaluation of it to you so that you can see.
Um, so I think that the delta between what we were doing and and what is being requested is the difference between a meeting. Fee to show up at the meeting versus a general retainer fee to do the stuff related to that. Things like the letter that we'll write to the council with regard to the ordinances, I see as independent of that. Because you won't know, there's no way for you to know where those things are coming. They're they're more infrequent. What I would want to be included would be, hey, here's the agenda, is it okay? Um, I I don't know what other little.
On the basis, I will take a look at, you know, I will have some correspondence with Sandy or some communication with Sandy. Here's the, here's the agenda. What do you think? Okay, you know, I think it's fine. I I put that time down in the dictionary. If we have a telephone conversation, we're seeing, you know, I I had a question about. Uh, a board, we're not really clear. There's a question for the internally, if this be coming to the zoning board adjustment, should this be coming to the planning board? You take a look at that and I go through that. You know, occasionally there might be a a correspondence where there is. Uh, again, it may involve an application, but it's something that we don't know. I don't feel comfortable in billing it to the applicant because it's something we're trying to decide what we're doing and to see that that's, that's part of my role and it gets billed to the municipality. Um, trying to think of an example of that, you know. If we, if we dispute what an applicant is doing for some reason, you know, we have a genuine disagreement. And now I'm doing additional research to support our position. Say someone managed, let's say someone wanted to challenge our interpretation of, uh, uh, floor area ratio. Well, my research on that and coordination with Jordan is not gonna be billed to that applicant. Because that's, that's us opposing, and I, you know, I.
I just don't wanna actually deal with that. If it's only hypothetical, it's fine.
No, it's a, it's a hypoth, I'm using my hypothetical, see, where there might be an interpretation where now it's like, okay, I've gotta send something to you. I'm not gonna be building the applicant, I'm building, I'm building an analyst for that.
And so you're you're for meeting fees five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
And so my proposal is that Doug add an hour's worth of time of that monthly to include the miscellaneous. And then come out as a lump sum. It cleans it up in terms of billing. It makes it easier for people to see. And the comments that came back to me, uh, left me thinking that that'd be a better way to do it. I'm good, Doug, with you figuring that out based on your time? You know, working and yes, you may not like us in the end. I mean, you know, eh, you wouldn't be the first one.
I'm 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 a lot older than this game than perhaps I would, I hope.
You're used to.
If I didn't like it, if I didn't like it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have suddenly died. I do have associates, by the way. Well, my my associates are people that have, you know, they've experienced.
Yes.
Those are good ones, but we like you.
But we, we can resolve the issue with the guy, the on Pine Cove, the guy that wouldn't move to the pool.
I I think that's still an outstanding issue. I don't think that's resolved. He was here tonight.
One.
And I, I, I wouldn't have that, I wouldn't have that discussion go public at this point, right?
Um, so do we have to vote on these?
Contracts, or? Uh, they're.
Not the name.
I thought that that was going whispering words. Is that not done?
I don't know where that is. I will, I will make a point to find out. I should have, I.
Mike's handling that.
Mike is handling that. Usually I will touch base with you to see if there's any development.
Let's do that for next meeting.
Yeah.
But and and I can talk to you offline about what I, what I heard that was gonna happen next.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
I heard, I heard similar to what you just mentioned, but I didn't hear it was final, it's final.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? Susan? Okay, let the record reflect, there's no public comments. Uh, anybody else with a good order? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.